Good.
Let's say four fifty-nine.
All right, now it says five o'clock.
Five o'clock. All right, it's five o'clock on March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Going to convene a special meeting of the Brooklyn County Deputy Sheriff's Civil Service Commission. Call to order. The purpose of the special meeting is we received a request for information regarding why a hearing was not given to Philip Butcher in October of two thousand and twenty-three. We're here to discuss that. There are two other items on the agenda that were added simply because we were meeting. We're going to clean them up, but the purpose of the meeting is this request for information from Corporal Butcher. Corporal Butcher, would you like to speak?
Other than just when I asked John as far as why I wasn't given a hearing, that would have been my main question.
Sure.
And I mean, I'm sure you saw my complaint.
I've got your petition. We've already read it. I think I understand it. There's some things about it that we could clear up, just make sure we got the facts straight, but as I understand it, you took a promotional exam in March of two thousand and twenty-two, got the highest score, correct? Then in conversations with Chief Deputy Young, they extended the offer of promotion, but they asked you to relocate to patrol.
Right.
Which you said you did not want to do, correct? And as I understand it, you declined that promotion, said, no, I won't do that.
Right. I would have had to gave him a letter saying I'd come out to the judicial center, basically.
Yes, sir.
Or he could pass me by, is what I was told.
I'm sorry?
Or he could pass me over, is what I was told.
Good, all right. On July sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, there was another promotional exam. Again, you were the high scorer. And again, you were extended an offer of promotion, but you were required to relocate to patrol again, correct?
Right.
We have some people just joining us, so let's get everybody signed in, okay? Would you mind? That's okay.
Randy, would you give that to me? I'll just put that up here in case anybody else. Thank you.
This is the petition? Okay. Yeah. Corporal Butcher, you were testing, you were talking, and we got the short interruption there. Do you have the petition that you had filed? Do you have that in front of you?
I do.
Would you mind just, I want to get the date straight, okay? I want to make sure we got the chronology straight about what's happened, all right? We'd established that on March one, two thousand and twenty-two, you took an exam, you were the high scorer. You were offered the promotion, but there was, you got it. That's for you.
Okay, okay.
You extended an offer of promotion, but it was required that you would relocate to patrol, right?
Right.
Then again, July sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, you took another promotional exam. Again, you were the high scorer. Chief Young extended the offer of promotion, but again, said you would relocate to patrol. You on the same page?
July twenty-sixth, right.
Okay. And then August twenty-five, twenty-three, there was a promotional exam. I understand from your petition that was specifically for patrol, and you understood that, you tested. You took the test, you understood it was patrol, and you didn't have a dispute with that. Is that accurate?
Right.
Okay.
Because it was granted by the county commission as patrol spots, and so I respected that.
Okay. Then September twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-three, you took another promotional exam, again, the high scorer. And I understand October third, two thousand and twenty-three, Chief Deputy Young extended the offer, again, asked you to relocate to patrol. And then there was discussion, October five, you accepted the promotion. And October ten, two thousand and twenty-three, there was a meeting with Delgotti and Faircloth, Redding, Lang, Harmon, Young, on October thirteenth.
Right.
Okay? And on October thirteenth, Chief Deputy Young confirmed your promotion and said you would remain in court security.
Right.
On October sixteenth, there was, you filed a petition with the Brooklyn County Civil Service Commission, Deputy Civil Service Commission, right? And you requested at that time backdated promotion compensation.
Right.
Okay. Now, as I understand, the purpose of this special meeting is to find out why this request made on October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three didn't result in a hearing.
Didn't result in anything, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. We on the same page?
Right.
All right. Where are we going to begin with this? At the time of the petition that we received, you had received promotion and you were granted the work assignment that you had requested. The judges had met with Chief Young and Delgotti, and the issue had been resolved. So the issue then was back pay. Correct?
Back pay or backdate?
Okay, all right.
I feel like it should be backdated more than anything.
There was some discussion among us, you know, I believe there'll be some more regarding that. It was never placed on agenda. It was never, it never received a full commissioned hearing, all right?
Right.
There was some discussion. We had received a petition. There were things going on, and I can only say that I think that the ball was dropped.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay?
Okay.
You've brought it back before us. And I think what we can do, if we have agreement among the three of us, or at least a majority among the three of us, we could set it for a hearing, if that's what you want to do. I'm going to tell you my initial reaction to the petition. It seemed to me that it was a dispute between the sheriff's department and the courts as to your assignment, and you as to your assignment. And I don't think that that was an issue that the Deputy Sheriff's Civil Service Commission is really equipped to take up, and I don't think it's our purview. That's frankly my, my opinion. But I don't know, because we have never had the, you know, the official meeting. We never had it on the agenda. We didn't discuss it openly. So I don't know how it's going to go, but that's, I'm just giving you my two cents, all right? You're looking at me like you're not.
Well, I mean, as far as just being assigned, assigned there, I did attach to my original thing all, all the code and paperwork with that, your review.
You did, you did, including Judge Faircloth's letters.
Right.
Correspondence that was delivered to the sheriff.
And then this email here, I don't know if I got a chance to add this one. We'll send out to everybody after the hearing is gone done where they acknowledge that. I just, I don't feel like it was handled properly to begin with, is.
Let's everybody catch up.
I, I don't recall if I saw it or not. I mean, it's two thousand and twenty-three, so.
I think that, that was sent out after I had filed my initial.
Okay.
If it's in my email somewhere, I'll, I'll track it down and be able to find it, but I, I don't recall.
All right. I'm not sure we've seen it. Is this a copy or is that your own copy?
I didn't have it.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll throw it in the file.
Okay. Yeah, I saw it.
I think that we ought to handle it this way. I've tried to introduce the issue, and I've tried to introduce my two cents on it. Let's see if there are questions from the other commissioners about where we are or what we ought to be doing. This is discussion time, okay?
Okay.
What, what, what would you be seeking with a hearing?
A backdated for when I first had to turn it down.
So you want to, are, are you in the position now?
I mean, I mean, I'm corporal right now.
Okay.
I would just seek a backdate. I mean, I would waive any compensation. I don't think the county needs to pay any money.
Corporal or backdate is.
Backdate to corporal date, when I originally tested and had to turn it down is what I'd be seeking. Like I said, I'm not seeking any money or compensation. Just the backdate. I think it's fair for the way it happened. Is basically what I would be seeking. And I outlined pretty fairly detailed of what everything I went through with it.
Well, you, you had taken the test three times?
Four times.
Four times.
Three or four, I can't remember.
Yeah, and I mean, and the first time you were told that, you know, you had to take it, you had to go to patrol, and you said you didn't want to, and the second time you was the same. Now, I understand that.
All times were the same except for when I just dug my feet in and said, you know, you talk to the judge. I'm not turning it down, and then you handled it however you're going to handle it.
But you do understand that, you do understand the judge, you know, exercised their right to do this, but it disrupted the, the the structure of the sheriff's department by a corporal being assigned in the courthouse when they needed them on patrol. They had to add another corporal position onto the, onto their ranks in order to backfill that.
Right, I understand that, and then from my point of view is they, they took a lieutenant out of the courthouse. They had a lieutenant in there, and they wouldn't even let me promote the corporal.
Yeah, I don't even, I didn't know that, so.
And then also they, besides doing that, when they, when I would permit the corporal, if they wanted to, they could just come and say, we don't need to fill this corporal position if I retire or whatever, and it'd be gone that way as well. So it's, it's one of them things that they could do also.
Okay.
It, I feel like I'm right too. You know, I got my side of it. But I, I don't, definitely don't think it was fair. They took a lieutenant out and wouldn't even let me promote the corporal. They had a lieutenant over there for, I couldn't tell you how long.
Okay.
Um, is, is, you don't have to answer this, save it for whatever, if we, if we have a hearing or whatever, but is, I mean, is your goal just backdating and not getting the back pay just so you'd be eligible for promotions?
Right.
What would be the backdate?
The date that.
I'm sorry, how long have you been? When were you, when is your official, was your, currently the official date of when you started?
September.
Of two thousand and twenty-four?
Of, what do you mean, as corporal?
Yes, yes, as corporal. When you started getting paid for it.
Promoted effect is nine, nine, twenty-three. Does that work?
I'm going to have it somewhere, I think.
Right.
It's going to be in nine, nine, twenty-three.
Yep. So he would be two years in rank in nine, nine, twenty-five.
Two years in rank in nine, nine, twenty-five, okay.
And there is testing coming up for, for sergeant, and I think he wants to participate.
All right.
Is that fair?
Yeah, I would be eligible if I was backdated in my original.
Yes, yes.
When is the test for sergeant coming up?
It's April. The test for sergeant.
April seventeenth.
That's why this is a special meeting.
I understand.
Okay.
We have an executive session.
David Strickler, any comments?
I, I agree with Corporal Butcher. And the reason I say that I was assigned to Musliman School as school resource officer.
Yeah, I need you to come up.
Sign in if you didn't.
I did sign in.
Yeah, she signed in, but the mic won't reach out.
Apologies, you made it short for me. Obviously, I haven't had a chance to discuss this with the association. However, I do tend to agree with Corporal Butcher. I briefly, well, for almost two years, actually, I shouldn't say briefly, was the school resource officer at Musliman, found myself in a similar situation where in order for me to promote, I would have to leave my assignment where I was very happy as the school resource officer. I did choose to leave in order to promote, but I was forced to do so. And I just, I understand that it is a disruption to the rank structure, but I don't believe that a special assignment should dictate whether you are able to promote if you are the person most qualified to do so and have time and grade.
Yeah, I, I understand that. See, but that, that is kind of the issue that troubles me a little bit. I don't think that we're in a position as a commission to tell the sheriff where he's going to assign people.
I, I don't disagree with that either. I'm not sure that this is maybe the right venue. However, I can see why he would come here because you guys are the ones that may look for the fairness and equality in promotions and hiring.
Right, it's appropriate here now, because if he feels he's not treated fairly, right, he can request a hearing, and we should, that's our responsibility. So if I understand correct, if, if this, let's say it went through, and we say, we agreed, and we say, okay, we'll backdate the, so when would you be able, when would he be able to test? Is that?
Well.
Be on the first.
Because.
He tested in March of two thousand and twenty-two.
Right.
A letter, I don't know when he was.
Well, so I will state that the vacancy date
Right, right, you're right.
is the date of eligibility. Goes from the vacancy date, it doesn't say anything about when you actually pass or accept the thing. So because I think that would make you eligible now, I'm going to recuse from any other discussion on this.
I'm not asking you to tell the sheriff or chief where to, where to, you know, put a corporal or anything like that.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's all settled differently from, from this. I just feel that I should have been able to promote and not told, hey, you gotta say you want to come out here, you gotta give me a letter of this, and that. That, that's my, that was my point of view in, in filing, what I filed.
I, I'm not saying I disagree or agree with you or anything. I'm not making any state laws, just it affects somebody that's related to me.
Right.
And I'm not going to, I'm not going to participate from here out, but.
Mr. President, may I ask one question? Philip's question, I, I know you tested on one March of two thousand and twenty-two, and I'll say it upfront, I don't have information, I thought I brought up, the stairs are with me. Do you know when the that promotion that you were testing for on March first, when that position became vacant? So that would be the date of eligibility that you would have tested for?
No, I do not. I don't, I don't, I don't have it while that one came open.
Okay. And that's the one that you are seeking to go back, have everything backdated back to that vacancy, not the second one, but the first one.
Right, the first time when I took it.
Randy, do you have that purple sheet, that color-coded sheet with you? Yeah, that's with me. I didn't bring mine. Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Where I'm stuck is are we telling the sheriff's department where they assign their personnel? Because I'm not going to do that.
No, no, me either.
No, I'm not asking you to do that. I was able to promote, but I was told I couldn't, or I was told I had to give a letter or, or, or whatever. But I don't feel like that should have prevented me from promoting, especially when, you know, I gave you some state code there and things like that.
Corporal Butcher, in March of two thousand and twenty-two, did they offer you the promotion?
Yes.
In July of two thousand and twenty-two, did they offer you the promotion?
Yes.
In September of two thousand and twenty-three, they offered you the promotion?
Yes, but like with the rest, I had to give them the letter that said.
Yeah.
That was the.
I understand you feel as though there was an unfair and improper restriction, requirement placed on your promotion.
I mean, can they tell you I'll pass, I'm going to pass you over?
Well, could they tell Deputy Strickler that they wouldn't take her out, that they would take her out of school resources if she promoted?
They did tell me that.
They would tell her that.
But the job description was different though, right? I mean.
I was one of the cruiser corporals.
Yep.
Thank you.
I, I was promoted under the three that were the new positions that were created, and they were called cruiser corporals. So it was advertised in advance that when I tested, I would need to come out of the school, and that was a concession I was willing to make.
Okay.
On prior testings, there had been similar situations, but I was like the second person on the list, so his specific situation never pertained to me. However, I was always willing to promote in lieu of my special assignment.
Got it.
But we're, I guess, like, he's trying to say that perhaps there was like a procedural error, like what is, is there somewhere that says they can, they can dictate your promotion in the future of your career based upon where you're willing to, to go within the department, and I'm not sure where.
Yeah, well, that would be a legal thing, and very much so, and you know, of course, we're not lawyers, well. we're not lawyers, well, DMS. Well, my thing was. You know, Mike, let me finish here. My thing is this, is that, and I'm, this is, and I could be, I would have to clarify this, but the main thing is, this is the job description, this is what the job is, it's a corporal or or just a deputy, this is the next job description, this is what it is, a sergeant, or, and then, so, what you, what, what, way I see this is there's a job description to do this in the courtroom, in the courthouse for the judge, and that is this position. Now, you made a statement about there was a sergeant or somebody in that courthouse as well, a lieutenant, and did they, they was assigned to a judge just like you?
Right.
The exact same thing.
And they got permission to to pull him out.
They got permission for what?
Well, I mean, they, they tried to pull him out before, but the judge was like, no, he's, I'm gonna, he's still my deputy, and then they moved on, then later down the road, they were able to get him out.
But in in just, I'm not, again, I'm not making any decisions, I'm saying that's precedence, and that's what we need to investigate, the precedence that happened. If, you know, and I think that's where this needs to go, is is there precedent set for this, for him to not to be promoted within the courthouse? And when did the letter come from the judge? When did the judge step in? That would be another thing.
I had a letter on the first test, but the chief just didn't wanna hear my side of the thing that.
But the letters from the judge on the first test.
The letters, yeah, they're all attached, they're all, they're all with it.
I apologize the dates, I'm old.
That's all right, it's been a while for this.
My buddy, okay, so, yeah.
All right, on March 11th, 2022, Butcher offered a letter from Faircloth to T.A. Young, and it was not well received. Is that fair?
Right, and the same type of letter that I just, on the last test, just.
In September, or excuse me, in October, again, the letter came, and this time it was acted upon, right?
The last test I did, right.
Yeah, okay.
And when it was acted upon, he got the promotion, he took the promotion, and he got the position in the courthouse that he's always had. I'm still hung up on back in March of 2022, what would our fix have been? What could we have done if the sheriff said, I offered him the promotion, I was gonna reassign him, he declined it? What's the Berkeley County Deputy Sheriff's Civil Service Commission supposed to do about that?
I don't know.
I don't think I could be denied to promote, it would just play out with the way it did before.
Yeah, you weren't denied the promotion.
Right. But I had to concede the.
Yeah, the reassignment.
Right, reassignment. And there, and there was a few things that I brought in, the letter was one, and there was administrative order, I'm sure you guys got a copy of that. Oh, I have that if you need it.
I'm not sure. I like paper.
He's the lawyer. Right here? Here's the front pages of it, and here's the, that's the section that I'm referring to.
Okay, sure. Administrative order from the Circuit Court. Seventeen A.D. twenty-six, so I assume that's, yeah, twenty-seventeen, Christopher Wilks, okay. Twenty-six, I assume that's, yeah, 2017, Christopher Wilks, okay. Yeah. I agree with you.
Me too.
But the disputes between Judge Faircloth and the sheriff's department, that's my problem.
Yeah, I'm not sure we can rule on that, based on, you know, because this is, this is not, this is between the judge and the sheriff not following.
That's the thing, it's been settled. I just, I just feel that, that's why I'm coming with you all, because you all deal with promotions. I feel that I should not have had to have turned it down when I first took the test.
Okay.
With everything that I have that backs, backs up what I'm, I'm telling you. That's what I, that's why I'm requesting a backdate. I don't want pay, I don't, I'm not, I don't see that, that, I just feel rightfully, fairly, it's, it should be backdated. I feel like that would be a decision you all would like.
Okay, there's been a motion for executive session. Seconded, okay. All right, we're going to move into executive session. We're supposed to state the grounds for it, I think that would be potential legal.
Is there any other questions you all have, or anything that you all have at paperwork? I don't know if you had that or not.
I think, I didn't have that, but I think I got where you're coming from.
Absolutely.
I think I have, let me check here real quick before you do that then.
Are you keeping that copy for?
I haven't decided yet, if he doesn't have another copy, then I won't keep it.
You can keep it.
We could acquire, it's probably correct.
Philip, can you send me that copy?
It's in my initial packet, you have all this.
In the initial packet?
Yeah, I submitted everything.
In case something gets lost or misquoted. Seventeen A.D., that's administrative, twenty-six, seventeen A.D. Twenty-six. It was signed by Judge Christopher Wilks on March 23rd, 2017. And the circuit clerk should be able to get to that.
And that other document that he presented you at the very beginning?
That was the letter.
That was an email right here, which she said we may keep.
Okay.
Okay, which we will keep right here. Now, motion, second, all in favor of executive session, aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to take a break.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, all right.
So, so.
Take it off the money. Don't like.